Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the discussion and approval of the minutes from the November 20-- excuse me, November 14th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval and release of executive session minutes from several meetings going back from February 28th of 2023, March 14th, March 17th, March 28th, August 22nd, and then, most recently, November 7th. Lori, is that 23 or 22, that November 7th? I think that's 22. Just want to make sure we have that right. While we look at that date, is there any discussion surrounding any of the minutes that are in our packets?
Should be 22, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion around any of those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'm going to go through the dates again, just so that we are sure we have them right. The executive session minutes from the meetings on February 28th, March 14th, March 17th, March 28th, and August 22nd of 2023, and November 2nd of 2022. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendents' report. Good evening, Mrs. Brangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. I hope everybody had a nice holiday, a nice little break. We certainly appreciated a couple of days off here. I will jump right into a personnel update. We would like to welcome Shawna McNally. She is a new ABA at Park Ave. And we have a couple retirement notices from Sean Harrington, an art teacher at the high school. He will be retiring at the end of the school year. And Jill Hickey announced her retirement. It will be effective 12/31/2023, so this December. She is a .6 physical therapist for the district. So we will be posting those positions and looking to fill them for next year. Yeah, good timing. Good timing. We just had a special guest arrive. This is one of those moments that makes me happy and sad all at the same time. We are here tonight to recognize another retiree this year. She's been counting down the days for a little bit of time. Ms. Ellen Jeffers. Ms. Ellen Jeffers has worked in the district for, it'll be 33 years. She started in 1985 and worked four years as a substitute until 1989. And then she worked from 1990-- and correct me if I'm wrong with any of these dates, as I was going back-- through '91 as an elementary teacher at 60%. She then became a full-time teacher from '91 through November 30th of this year, 2023, as an elementary teacher, spending the last of her years from 2015 as a STEM teacher at Park Ave. During that time, Ellen was also wearing many different hats in the school district. She served as grade-level leaders. She served and represented the union and union president. I've been fortunate to know her not only as a colleague, but as a mom, a parent volunteer. She was one of the first rooms that I volunteered in when I started. So I've known her for a long, long time. And I can't thank you enough, Ellen, for your contributions to Webster, your-- our community. When I think of the number of kids in those 33 years, in many of those years, not just as a teacher, but when you're-- when you're a STEM teacher, you're seeing all kids. You're not just seeing a classroom of kids. So if you count the number of little lives that you've touched and just were able to help mold, it's quite a feat. And your contribution has been, is very appreciated and will always be very appreciated. I don't know if you noticed a little plaque. It's a new tradition we started this year. That's going to be hanging at all of our buildings. I didn't think it was going to be that busy right away. I should have got a bigger plaque, I think. But I just wanted you to hear and be recognized and say thank you so much. And I don't know if Linda's going to help me say a few words.
Of course. And I wrote notes. I didn't want to forget. So I'm going to do the union side. So 15-plus years of being a union rep, vice president, and co-president with me, negotiating contracts, keeping me calm, and me keeping her calm, and always doing her best for students and colleagues. Many summer MTA conferences and seminars, keeping up on everything we needed to do to build a strong union, and surviving many superintendents and principals over those years. But what do I remember most? And it still happens. Her face lighting up whenever a student comes up to talk to her. That smile comes out. And the following, I'm using the word "special" to describe Ellen because special implies uniqueness, and that's what you have. And you've displayed it for many, many years in your career with the Webster Public Schools. Being a special teacher, a colleague, a special wife, even though I know Mike probably got, you know, had to put up with all the union stuff, a special mom to her two girls, and what's most important for me, a good friend, someone who is there to give support and listen. So my wish for you is to enjoy this next chapter, my friend.
That was very well said. We have a little something for you.
Last time I have to sit at this mic.
It's time to come back.
We've sat here many, many times. I did prepare a few words. And thank you for your kind words. I would spend my pleasure to teach here in Webster, the town where I grew up, for the past 33 years. The staff of the Webster Public Schools is filled with caring, dedicated individuals who want nothing more than to see the child that walks through their doors, our doors, succeed. Teachers dedicate their lives to helping young people achieve their fullest potential. But in retrospect, I think the young students that I've taught have helped me achieve my potential as a teacher. I thank all those students, and yes, many, many, that have walked through my doors. They say that teachers touch the lives of their students. I say that students touch the lives of their teachers. The students I have taught will live on in my memories forever. I'd like to thank my many colleagues, both past and present, for their support, friendship, ideas, and that cup of coffee. Thank you for being a sounding board, for your friendship, for sharing my joys, sorrows, and struggles. They too are a part of my who I am and who I have grown to be. People have asked me what I'm going to do now that I'm retiring. I've never been, as Linda knows, never been one to sit around playing shuffleboard or checkers. I don't expect that I'll be doing that in my retirement. I plan to travel to places I've always wanted to go but haven't been. I'm going to read books that have been on my must-read list for years. I'll garden, learn new skills, visit art museums, enjoy being around friends. In short, I plan to live. As Mr. Fred Rogers once said, "Often when you think you're at the end of something, you are at the beginning of something else." I thank you all for everything.
I did think she forgot substituting. I was going to bring that up. I think she left that off the list.
Although these past three months, subbing in the sub-separate room have been fabulous.
Well, I hope that we see you around, and I hope you will think of coming back in some capacity, even if it's not subbing, maybe volunteering and reading to some kids on Community Reading Day.
I'm sure I'll be around.
We're always looking for volunteers on Field Day, too.
I was going to say, on Field Day? You and me, ready?
I miss seeing you there. Mrs. Jeffers, I just want to thank you for all that you've done over the years. I know you had a big impact on both of my children and countless other children. So just from my heart as a mom, thank you so much for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Don't be a stranger. Happy and sad at the same time, right? We have so many wonderful staff that put in so many years here in Webster, and I hope that continues, and we celebrate, and we celebrate you, Ellen. So thank you. I think it's-- I think we should adjourn now. All right, I will continue on. Under family and community engagement, just a few brief things. We had parent conferences were held on November 15th on the afternoon and on Thursday evening. They were well-attended. So we were happy to see parents out and about and in our schools engaged in their student learning. We've also had a couple of family events over the past couple of weeks, including veteran ceremonies, Park Ave Fall Festivals. We've had Mohegan Family Bowling Night at the Webster Middle School. I was very happy to say that this Thanksgiving, we had a really nice turnout at our home game. I won't talk to it too much because I'm sure that's in Mohammed's report. But it was wonderful to see everybody there, to have many alumni, to have our band chairleaders. So many families and students, past students, came out to support our team, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of them. Their continued support and their willingness to come back year after year to that wonderful tradition is very much appreciated, and I hope it continues for years to come. Inside your packet, I also moved something up. Grandparents raising grandchildren. I brought this to your attention some time ago. I had met with Ms. Kimberly Rockwood. It's an organization that supports grandparents who are raising grandchildren. We had met about hosting meetings here in Webster. Our plan is to have meetings after the first of the year. She wanted some time to finish out the end of the year because she organizes the events and the speakers that are coming, and will just be hosting the space. But any Webster parents are welcome to attend the meetings in Oxford. They're just being held there. They are the second Wednesday of the month in the community room at the Oxford High School. The next meeting is on, I believe it's December 13th. I put that notice in. So I will be sending that out to the district, to our family members, so they are aware. And they're also doing, hosting a Christmas celebration for grandparents who are raising grandchildren, and she's asking for an RSVP. So we will send them out to our families also, that they're welcome, and we're hoping down the road that we'll be hosting those internally in our district. Are there any questions about that? And other updates, the financial end-of-the-year report has been submitted, and I did provide a copy in the packet for your review. We can amend that report at any time if we see there, we find any errors after the fact or make any changes to that. We just upload an amendment, and then after the first of the year, we will schedule our audit to come in and take a look at that report. Next, I just wanted to inform you that Dr. Mackay, Kathy Barris, Sherri Hare, and Jill Chapdolane will be attending the case conference this week. The conference runs from November 29th through December 1st. This conference focuses on literacy, and it's a great way to collaborate and connect with colleagues across the state. A big part of case is also the compensatory services, which we provide through Title I and through Special Ed. So it's a great conference to go to. They host a couple of year, usually now, and then they'll do another one in the spring, which we'll be attending, and it's a great way to get some good information for our district. And other updates, I continue to have monthly meetings with our WA union representatives and our-- also our paraprofessional representatives of the union to connect and share with any concerns or positives. So we're on the same page. They've been very well organized meetings where we discuss, and it's not just anything negative, it's positives. They also bring a bright side, happy things that are going on in the school, things they're happy with, the collaboration with building principals, and the support that they're receiving. So we will continue to meet with them monthly through the end of the year and keep that on a regular schedule. It's a great way to nip any issues in the bud and just make sure we're just continuing that conversation. And then finally, we're also reviewing our S.R. grants. We have met as a team, Dr. Mackay, Ms. Lisa Kontos, and myself. As you know, they're going to be ending this year. Over the year, we went out to bid and awarded an RFP for two multifunction vehicles. Those vehicles were intended to be used for smaller sports teams, some of our life-skill kids when they go out into the community. And because the S.R. grants are expiring, we had to file an extended liquidation through December because the grants, you're supposed to be expending them by the-- S.R. 2 was supposed to be expended by September 30th. We extended that out until December because of the back order in delivery. These were ordered over a year and a half ago, and we have continued to wait for the vehicles to come in. There's been a delay after a delay, and it's all parts. They did just reach out to me. They did have-- one of the vehicles will be ready for delivery shortly before the end of December, so we will take that in. They're not sure about the second vehicle. So we did reach out to our contact at DESI to see what do we do about that situation now where the funds will be expiring and our liquidation only went to the end of December. So we're not sure if they're going to extend that. So we're kind of in limbo there, waiting for some feedback. Other than that, we should be in good shape with our other S.R. grant. S.R. 3, we met, and that will be going through the end of this school year. So as we're preparing for next year's budget, we're taking S.R. It will no longer be available, so all of those items will be incorporated into our regular budget, and we'll be discussing that as a team once we put those budgets together. And we'll be having those meetings now as we speak. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Brangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. Let's first start with, the business office has had a vacancy since Colleen Piasta left the department to go to the town of Webster in September, and we are filling that vacancy officially tomorrow with Lisa Feifield, who is an internal transfer. As many of you know, she's been in the district for 29 years. So this is very bittersweet for her in terms of making this move, and it was really nice to see last week at the pep rally, she was recognized in front of the entire student and faculty at the pep rally. So pretty excited to have Lisa joining us. Let's moving on to some of the building committee updates. So I'm going to give you some good news and some bad news. Let's start with the good news. After several months, which the process started sometime in spring, we did receive our approval from the planning board last night. So we have completed all of the permitting process through conservation and planning, and we'll be all set once we get the final draft decision to us to be prepared to put in for the site permits. So, any questions on that? All right, let's move on to the next topic. So we discovered that we had a technical finding in the bidding process for the construction project. And what that technical finding is, is there was-- came to light that the requirement by Mass General Law to include workforce participation goals was not discovered in the bidding materials. That came to light from the Executive Director of the Foundation of Fair Contracting. They had reached out to get those goals. It was our expectation that we were adopting the Mass goals for both of those categories, for women and minorities, but for some reason, it was not in those materials. So we did consult with both the Attorney General's Office and with our own attorney, and it was determined that that was a substantive requirement, and the recommendation for us was to go out and rebid. That required us to have an emergency meeting of the school building committee. What we needed to do was to pull the committee together because we needed to stop all of the bids that were coming in. As you may recall, in the last meeting, I reported on all of the subcontractor bids that we had received. We did get the committee back together and rejected those bids, as well as stopped the bids coming in from the general contractors. So we are going back out to bid. Those postings will end up in the central register tomorrow, and we will have to repost the legal notices, as well as do the bidding and comp buys as well. So as a result of that, that puts those bids due in January. The subcontractor bids are due in the first week in January, and then the general contractor bids are due on the 17th. So that is a delay in the work effort. What we did in working with the OPM, as well as the school building committee, and both the emergency meeting and the plan meeting that we had last week, was to look at alternatives and schedules. We were looking at a couple of alternatives, and the committee chose to go with as soon as possible to get this started. And so the way that this aligns is that the general contractor and the contracts will be signed in late January. They will come on board. There's some administrative stuff that the general contractor has to do, but during February vacation, that's when the chairlift will be installed for the project in lieu of the elevator. So the timing was aligned with those breaks that we have. So very unfortunate and very disappointing events that took place, and we are working in consult with our legal counsel as we move forward on this.
Thank you for those updates. I mean, unfortunate for sure, but nowhere to go but forward at this point. Relieved that the school building committee was able to get together so quickly to develop another plan. So happy for the updates. Any other comments from the committee?
Move on to some maintenance updates. At the last meeting, I had reported to you regarding the boiler. So we have been exploring those options. So there's two options that we're looking at right now. They include, and I should say at Bartlett, they include either renting a boiler or purchasing a boiler. I might have mentioned in the last meeting that the new boiler under the renovation project is planned to be installed in Phase 1. So what happens is it's a little bit tricky here in terms of how the building will be heated during construction. So once the first section starts in construction, it's the general contractor's responsibility to heat that section of the building. So the boiler that we need is-- needs to heat two sections at a time until we're ready in Phase 3 to cut over to the new boilers. So we have been consulting with a provider right now and evaluating those options in terms of moving forward. And actually, we have a consult, I think it's tomorrow or Thursday, to evaluate some of those options so that we can go out to bid. Certainly looking for the most cost-effective approach, given that the solution is temporary. I think that's key for everyone to know. We're also factoring in what those needs are based on the duration because we are required by law to be running those boilers from October 15th until May. So we are also evaluating that because that comes into play if we start looking at renting a boiler as well. Anything to add?
Sorry, just a question. So if we had gone out to bid as planned, would the current boiler have been able to handle the two sections through our winter since the general contractor would have been responsible for the other section?
Let me just make sure I'm clear. The current boiler that's working?
Yeah, so--
The one that's working?
Does that-- that's heating the entire building, correct? At this point?
Mm-hmm.
And per our agreement with the general contractor, once construction started in the section, they were responsible for heating that section, correct?
That section only, correct.
So would they have-- when would they have technically started construction if we had the initial bid accepted?
So they would have started their administrative onboarding at the end of this month, in the beginning of December, and then work would have-- so over a Christmas break is when the chairlift would have been installed, and so activity would have begun within the December timeframe. So it delays us about two months.
But the general contractor would have been responsible for heat starting in January?
Only one section. And they're only responsible for the section that's under construction.
Would the-- but our boiler that works would not have been able to heat the other two sections on its own? So we would have to-- we would have to find a fix either way.
Right. Small boiler that we have, only it has the capacity--
Sure.
Five. One. So it's enough right now. It's warm, it's working, it's warm, but if we get that cool-- forward quickly and looking at all options, is it more cost-effective to purchase boiler? Almost. And buy a boiler, is that boiler going to-- project? Figure, work through and talk through all the-- and we're going to have to go out to bid.
We're going to have to go out to bid for the boilers because it's going to take time because of the price. So, you know, I don't know-- I don't know that we can do an emergency procurement. I'd have to look into that. I don't-- I think they'll make us go through the entire process, so we need to start that sooner than later because by the time you go out to bid, anything over $50,000, it needs to be a sealed bid. You've got advertising requirements. It can-- it can be a lengthy process. Just bidding alone, it delayed the process a good six to seven weeks when you go through the process. So we're in a crunch.
For the building project. I would assume that--
Yeah, so this would be similar.
--this would constitute an emergency, though.
I would think so, yes. Yes. But I have to reach out. I have to notify the Inspector General's Office for that. Attorney General's, Inspector General, I think.
So just to summarize, either way, with this boiler having failed, we would be in this crunch of a situation with heating the building. But with that being said, also, the other part of the project is a little bit off-track at this point, about two months. Not ideal.
Yep.
Okay.
So really, when you think about it, we have two heating cycles, right? That we needed this boiler to last, two more heating cycles, this winter and next winter is what we needed to get out of that boiler before the new system is online. And so we've got to figure that out.
Thank you for those updates. I'm ready for the good news. We're going to do a good news sandwich here.
The good news was the planning board--
I'm only kidding. No issues at the middle school or Park Avenue, though, right?
I think it's called Welcome to the District. Mrs. Kontos?
Is this, is the room that the boilers are in this building the one where we had difficulty-- does the room, the doors are too small? That was Park Ave?
That was the water heater at Park Ave.
I think the key thing is this is a top priority for us. I think that's the message we want to really send in that we're being very thoughtful about the upcoming renovation project and the fact that that includes the installation of new boilers. So we really want to be very mindful of, you know, doing this in the most cost-effective way and in a way that certainly will serve the needs of heating the building. And also, if we end up having to go to the purchase route, can we, you know, find places to resell this afterwards, right? Or other uses within the town?
Which is gonna, we're also going to have to take a look at funding because none of these alternatives are cheap. So when you're looking, you know, at purchases like this, you're, you know, you're looking over $100,000, so that has to come from someplace. So that's also another thing we're going to have to look at is funding and take a real look at budget, grants. Where can, where, where can we pull funds to pay for something of this magnitude?
Okay, I'm going to move on to food services updates. On a lighter note, we had some activities going on with the Farm to School Harvest. Really exciting that we had some of our students participate in some taste tests with some kale chips. So they had an opportunity to participate in it, give some feedback. This is something that we're looking to do as part of this program, is to offer these at the schools on a regular basis. So we will be introducing kale at both Bartlett High School and Webster Middle School on an ongoing basis in our salad bar lines. We've also had some repairs go on within the cafeteria. We had a repair that we needed to have done on the compi oven due to a leak, and as well, some repairs do, done on the kettle at Park Ave due to some electrical issues. They're all back up and running and functioning well. The superintendent had reported at our last meeting that we were really bringing back the Wellness Committee. So we have launched that, and we are preparing to have those virtual meetings moving forward. And I think our first one is mid-month in December. And lastly, we have one opening in the cafeteria right now. So if anyone is listening and interested, please reach out to the main office. If they're interested, there's an opening at the breakfast shift. Any questions?
Clearly very busy. We're, we're glad that you're on the team and that you both are working together on this, not only the building project, but heating of the building, which, you know, is urgently needed. So, I, it's tough to bring less than stellar news to the committee, but you did it in a great way. And, you know, I have faith that you all are going to find the most cost-effective way to keep the building heated, keep the students safe, and keep the project as on track as it can be. It's a lot of, a lot of things to juggle.
It is. The good news is, we have 14 module classrooms where a big majority of our students are during the day that are heated and warm and working fine. So, when you think about it, the areas that are impacted here are cafeteria. You know, we have a few classrooms inside, but the majority of our classrooms now are outside of the modulars. So, that's a bright side to it.
That's, that's a good way of looking at it, for sure, you know? Great. Any other questions or comments from the committee? No? Well, thank you, Ms. Contos, for your updates. And the next item on the agenda is the principal report. Joining us this evening is Ms. Amy Polyafico from Park Ave. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello? So yeah, the last time I was here was October 10th, so that seems like a really long time ago. And so we've had quite a few events since then. First up are some climate and culture events. We hosted Worcester Academy to come perform The Sound of Music for our third and fourth graders. They performed just small excerpts from their show. Worcester Academy put on the, the show at, at their school. So the, a small troupe came and performed for our third and fourth graders and sang. It was really, really a great event. We also, as I've talked about before, we have merit winners as part of our PBIS program, so a way teachers can recognize students for positive contributions and behaviors. So as part of that, we drew winners of merits to participate in a minute to win it against our polar bear. Third grade was able to attend and view as the class with the fewest behavior referrals in our, in our program. So third grade came and viewed. It was, we had students from kindergarten up through fourth grade. We were able to zoom it out to the whole school as a school-wide event, so. And with Mr. Stand as our referee. So it was a, it was a fun event. It was great. Polar bear cheated, but that's okay. Mr. Stand caught him. We also have happening the Real Madrid Basketball Program. So I know this is a program that began at the middle and high school. They've decided to move it down. There are not many sporting opportunities for the elementary students. So we do have the Real Madrid Basketball Program happening. We'll also host soccer in the spring. We had four staff go through about a two and a half day training with the Real Madrid staff in the program. We have about 45 students signed up, so it's very robust. Through the grant, we were also able to get a late bus, which allowed, which we, most of our students are traveling home by late bus. So it's been a great way to allow families to participate that maybe in other times wouldn't be able to. So, it's been, it's been fantastic. We did have to create a waitlist for the program just due to space and staffing, but we hope to be able to have other kids participate in soccer in the spring. We also did hold a candlelight vigil for Omar Sedeno Nunez, who was our third grade student who died earlier this year. It was well-attended by his family, by staff, by other students, all who came up and spoke in memory of Omar. So it was a really nice way to honor Omar and support his family. We do still have his, his sibling in, at Park Ave, an older sibling at the middle school. So I think it was really important for us to come around and, and support the family in all the ways that we could. So that was a nice tribute to Omar and his family. We have had two Student of the Month celebrations since we were last together, which is a fantastic event. We have breakfast, the families come. We have now introduced music, so the kids have walk-up songs. It's a very fun event. We have a great turnout. We always have a, a large number of families that come to that. We have very few students who, whose families are unable to make it. So it's a really fantastic event. And then we've had quite a few family and community engagement activities as well since I was last here. We did hold Book Bingo, which is always a popular event for our families. We, Ms. Wojo, one of our guidance counselors, put together a Veterans Wall where families and staff were represented for those of us that have veteran families. As Ms. Perangeli mentioned, we had conferences, which were, at the elementary school are always packed and well-attended. And Fall Festival, which was on November 18th. We had about 15 families attend that day. It was a fun event of games and bake sale and dancing and. We usually do a, a winter carnival as well, which is always big, well-attended. So this was a new addition to our, to our sort of repertoire. And we also will have winter literacy come, night coming up on December 8th. So that's always a well-attended night, too. Which actually, in the past, Ms. Jeffers was always our reader, so. So that will be a change this year. And Girls on the Run, they did have their practice on November 4th at the middle school track. And their official run is December 2nd. It is, it is at Lake Park, Quinsigaman Park, Third. Good thing you told me, because I'm running, walking, running. Is that a Saturday? Yeah, oh, okay. Yep. Double-check that. Yeah, you could be right. I'm sure you know, Ms. Sediki. And they are holding a donation drive for a local animal shelter. As part of Girls on the Run, they need to give back to the community. And so the Girls on the Run are holding a drive for a local animal shelter. So that will be at Quinsigaman Lake Park in Worcester, around the track there. So if anybody is coming, dress warm. It should be cold right on the water there. We also have, we have moved our report cards to online. When I arrived last year, we did our report cards all on Google Docs. So the teachers plugged them into Google Docs and one per student. So we have moved to using our Power School System, which middle school and high school use to produce our report cards. We are not yet rolling out to families as we need to get familiar with the programming ourselves and make sure that everything is running smoothly. But it is exciting to be able to have moved online with our report cards. And then that's it. That's all for us.
Lots going on at Park Avenue.
Yeah, there always is.
Any questions or comments from the committee? No? Okay. Well, thank you for your updates. I'll see you on Sunday. I, too, am walk jogging.
Yeah.
So we'll try to go easy on each other.
Yes, yes. Yes, warm.
Yeah, for sure. Hopefully, it won't be any colder than assumption last year. That was really cold, too. Yeah.
Yeah. Think I must have blocked it out.
Yeah, probably. Froze it out. Anyway, thank you for your updates. Lots of good things happening at Park Avenue. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student rep, Mohammed. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving and fun weekend with their family. So before students in Bartlett, before Thanksgiving break, the students in Bartlett had a spirit week leading up to the break and a pep rally the day before the break. It was really fun and a great way to end the weekend. So the spirit weekdays were, on Thursday was White Lie. Friday, it was Decade Day. Monday was Babies versus Seniors. We dressed up as a baby or a senior. And then Tuesday was teacher dress-ups as students and students dress up as teachers. And then Wednesday was Green and White Tribe Day. I think the most popular were like Monday and Tuesday with babies and seniors. Those are fun. I did those days, too.
Yes, you looked good and gray hair.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, yep, yep.
And then for Tuesday, I dressed up as Mr. Bernal.
Yep.
With the bald head and everything. I had a ball cap on. And then for pep rally, it was really good. I loved it. The cheerleaders, like, made a lot of games. It was really fun. I love that they memorated Ms. Byfield. Such a sweet teacher. I'm so sad that she's leaving the office. Every single time I go by the office, I just wave to her. Now I have to, I'm going to have to come in here and be like, wave to her. It's so sad. Yeah, it was a really great way to set off Thanksgiving game, which we won, by the way. That was amazing. So before that, I'm going to talk about the field trip. There was a student council field trip that we went to in Tantascwa. It was a conference fall, it was a conference for like leadership. We just went in like workshops. There was like a lot of workshops, like they set up in every room. Tantascwa's big, so they had like a lot of rooms over there with all the conferences or workshops. I liked the one where you just like talked to other schools and just like connected with like what ideas are, we can have for fundraising for grades. It was very fun. And the food was good, too. Always important, exactly. And then for Thanksgiving game, it was very good, very exciting. It was a close game. It was 10 to 8, which was very fun, so we won. Yay. So yeah, that's it. I want to say good job to the coaches for that. Yep, thanks.
Great. Thanks for your update, Mohammed.
Thank you so much.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
The chair.
Yeah, Mr. Adam.
I just want to say, considering the football program, congratulations to the Gridiron Club, to the players, to the coaches. I, I think that the program's come a long way over the last few years from almost not having enough players even suit up to gradually building that up. My understanding, they've really overachieved this year going into it compared to what their expectations were. So it's good to see that program coming back. And I do know, I think in the middle school, that program's building itself up, too. So I think in the long run, it's good to see that that's turning around. Hopefully, we can see that expand to some of the other fall programs and winter programs. Hopefully, some success will lead to more participation.
I agree. And that's what we hope. And I think across the district, we're seeing more involvement and participation. I mean, you have, you just said you had, what, 45 kids sign up at the elementary level for winter basketball for Real Madrid. We're hope, we have seen after-school participation pickup, sports pickup across the district, more participation from students coming to games, attendance games, and that school pride picking back up, and we hope that continues. I think extracurricular is so important, just as important as during the normal day because that gives some of our students a reason to come to school and be involved and just give that little bit extra to exceed during the day. So I, I thank everybody. I thank the principals for their efforts because this entails a lot of late afternoons, a lot of evenings. I went to the weekend Fall Festival, and all three administrators were there. They're all showing up at many events. So that means they're not spending time with their families. They're here in the district spending time, and that happens across the district and all of our schools. I see many staff who, who don't need to be there that are there. And I, I just want to say thank you, and it's appreciated and it doesn't go unnoticed. And I'm thankful for our families for coming out and supporting us and being active participants. And we just have to keep, we have to keep that momentum going and give them support and keep offering programming for them to come out and build it back up. Even just having our band, our high school band, it might be small this year, but I know the participation at the middle school has been, you know, they played together at one previous game, and we had a really nice turnout of middle school kids coming up to play in the band. So hopefully, we can continue that momentum and build that to next year. That's our hope anyways. We have to offer it for them to participate. If we take it away, you know, we're not even giving them a chance. So we've got to give these programs time to come back and be active.
Great. Any other comments from the committee?
Who's the champ, Ms. Mill?
I, I just wanted to add that it was nice. I don't know how many times I went up Ray Street and I'd see that team practicing up there like, it seemed like daily. And it was just so nice to see going, it's back. It's back. The only thing I did miss, and I don't know if anybody knows, but I grew up in Webster, and we used to listen to the football game on local radio. And I missed on Thanksgiving Day when we couldn't get there. I really miss that.
Funny you mention that because my mom mentioned it because she was at the house manning the crowd for me while I was at the game. And she said, "We tried to get the game on radio and we couldn't listen to it." So I don't know when they stopped broadcasting that and how, they used to attend games. But I, I heard a couple people say that they missed it. People who can't leave the house didn't have the opportunity to hear the game.
It was a great game to hear, too.
It was, yep.
Maybe we, somebody will think on the Gridiron Club, we'll put a little bug in the area to try to figure that one out because a lot of people would like to do that, too, that can't get there. I really, I said it to my sons, remember when we used to listen to it on the radio on Thanksgiving Day? It's a memory.
Yeah.
Yep.
So hopefully, we can get it back.
We can try.
Yep. Any other comments from the committee? It's great. All good things happening here. So again, thanks, Mohammed, for your updates. And the next item on the agenda under new business is the acceptance of donations. We have 25 turkey meals from the Greek Church to Webster Middle School families. Also, 15 Thanksgiving baskets from the Greek Church to Park Ave families and miscellaneous items that also went to some Park Avenue families.
Yep. I'd just like to thank the Greek Church for their support. They are always very generous and in- And in regards to the donations for miscellaneous, there's a lot of different people and different organizations who are donating to our food pantry over at Park Ave. Our new family liaison, Wes, is a go-getter. She is out there, and she is providing for our families and supporting our families. So we just want to thank everybody, and I personally thank her for her efforts and for our families at Park Ave. She's doing fantastic work.
Great. And I, too, would like to thank, you know, everybody that made the donations on behalf of the committee. And I'll entertain a motion to accept all of these donations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion at a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Round office.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of the out-of-state field trip, Bartlett High School art students to New York City.
Yep. This is a trip that Mr. Harrington typically runs every year. He's in his final year, so this may be his final trip. I keep trying to think of reasons to keep him and him wanting to stay. But the art department will be tending New York City. This is funded by the Janet Maulsner Grants, which he always applies for. He is a go-getter, and I just, again, appreciate all the work he does on behalf of our kids. He supports that program. He does great work with the program. If you've ever seen the art that those kids produce, it's pretty amazing. So I'm trying to get some of it for this room, but we'll see.
So are there any questions or comments from the committee regarding this field trip? It's not an overnight. It's just an out-of-state field trip. Questions before we entertain a motion? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve this field trip for the Bartlett High School art students to go to New York City.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion at a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Round office.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Very exciting time for them. The next item on the agenda is a review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.